We have called meeting, y'all. Grant, if you would. Grant, if you would, open our meeting pause, please.
Well, grace of heaven, Father, Father, we just want to thank you for this day, we want to thank you for this town, Father, and Father, all the people that are here to do the business of the town, Father, just give us information, give us knowledge, and help us to do the best things for the town and the people that's in it, Father, and just make it a good working atmosphere for all of us. And, Father, we just thank you, and we know that you're here with us, and, Father, we know that we can trust you and lean to you and look to you in all situations, Father. Father, I thank you from the City Council, remember the people here, and the mayor, and the reporter, and the public, Father? Just to thank you and pray that it's a good meeting, in your name we pray. Thank you.
Amen. Okay, I'd like to record note that all of our councilmen are present. God has a number of guests present, and New Media also. And first thing on the agenda is, if everybody had a chance to look at the agenda, any motion approved, you make motion approved.
Second.
All four. All right, now then, finish the previous month. Any questions, comments? If not, then here are motions approved. Make motion to approve.
Second.
All four. Okay, now then, this came in a little earlier this year, but might well be out of the way while it's on top of the list. And that's our water rates. The water rate rule that came out a short time ago, there are five years. Well, it looked like that the year that we filed on was the fourth year, so this year will be the start of another five years, hopefully. So, you know, we never did increase the, we never did add the last five dollars on to the rates. So, that's still five dollars shorter than what they should be. So, I'm asking this year to change the water rate from zero to one thousand gallons, twenty-three dollars, that's the same as it is. From one oh one up to where it goes, nine dollars and forty-two cents a gallon, a thousand, that's up six dollars and thirty-two cents. That will include the five dollars we didn't add on for the previous year. And...
So, that's six dollars and thirty-two cents per thousand?
Per thousand, after the first thousand.
So, we went from...
What is it?
Three dollars and twelve cents, yeah, three dollars and twelve cents to nine forty-two?
Uh, whatever nine, six thirty-two is, over nine forty-two.
Three dollars and twelve cents.
Yeah, okay.
So, we tripled?
Right, yeah.
Yeah. But the things, the constant things are tripled too, haven't they?
Everything tripled, and we've got a lot more than I would have been able to bring it up this time, but I will anyway. New health department rules, regulations are, and Juan just got back this week from the Water Works conference in Hot Springs. And the service lines from the meter to your house, if it's not the right material, it's gonna have to be replaced. Now, at one time, they were talking about the state paying a contractor to come in and do this. But now then, that don't look like the way they want to go. They're talking now about the homeowner being helped by the city to replace that line. Now, if it's the right kind of PBC line, then it don't have to be replaced, but if it's galvanized...
So, gotta be replaced, has to be replaced?
Yeah. If it's galvanized or, I think, copper, it's gotta go.
Copper's got to go, wasn't it?
So. It used to be copper was the easy way to go.
Well, not in, you know, because our house is plumbed with copper.
I know.
We have PVC to run through the house.
Yeah.
What about the copper in the house?
There hasn't been nothing said about that, which I don't think they'd be bold enough to take like three plumb old house.
I can't see how they're bold enough to make people be plumbed from the meter out. I mean, the city is responsible up to the meter, and the people are responsible from the meter on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How can they force you to change what you've got there?
And you know the state, you know what.
I'll put it also on what I would do, because that's, they can't force you to do that.
Yeah.
So, you're talking about, I can see a grandfather then, from this point forward, we had to use this.
I could see that.
But just coming in and saying, okay, there's twelve thousand people in this town, hope six thousand of y'all can get your water lines replaced by this date.
They got to see an M dollar mark too, because to start with, the state was gonna pay for that.
Oh, that's a lot of money.
But that's a lot of money that government, it's a lot of money.
And if they require you to, they should pay for it.
That's being talked about, it's probably gonna come true, that's being talked about. And the second thing, and I hadn't had a chance to even talk to Juan at all since he got back from the conference, but the second thing is, we've already had to do this once before, but we're gonna do it again, and that's take the ponds, sewer ponds, see how much sludge is in the bottom of the ponds. If it's over six inches, then we're most likely gonna have to bring the pond clean out. So, more expense is all, I mean, look down the line, and everything's got more expense side to it. So, believe me, if there's anything I can do about it, I'd black do it.
Let me ask a question on that rate change. We were actually supposed to do two changes, but we missed one, so we have to actually make up for the one we missed.
We didn't make that up, yeah.
And that makes us in compliance though, because we gotta make compliance.
As I understand it, if we raise it up to this, that will take care of us until we need to raise it, or five years.
Yes, from now, right.
The way I understand it.
Because every five years, you have to have a study, and that's when they recommend or mandate a price increase.
Right, the study, the study may come back showing you're okay, may come back showing you're not okay.
Right.
Yeah. What is the average per household usage, per gallons?
Roger, keep that real close.
I don't know. It's like a part part, I try by myself, I try to keep mine under two thousand gallons. I don't always succeed, especially in the summertime when I have water pressure. But I try to keep mine under two thousand gallons, and that's some people with three and four in their house, oh, you know, it goes up.
But...
Five thousand, something like that, you know, and it's like, oh, you know, it's...
Yeah.
There's gonna be, a lot of folks fall into this one thousand gallon bracket.
Yeah.
A lot of the folks that we were concerned about before won't even be as close to them as this. Because they've a lot of years, hundreds of thousands.
So, we're just raising the, over that, over the thousand gallons, that's what we're raising?
Well, we actually do it two, because we didn't do, we didn't do the initial one in the first place. So, I think we're actually doing two to just get in compliance with what we're trying to say.
Same at zero to a thousand.
Yeah, that's why, that's why it seems like a big jump, because we didn't do, we didn't make the first one.
Three dollars a thousand.
Already, so we're raising twenty-five?
No, the first thousand gallons, they're the same.
Twenty-three dollars for the first thousand?
Yeah.
And then a thousand and one and a half will go to, to the increase.
Nine forty-two thousand.
Because that would, sometimes we count a lot of deficits, we actually need these increases to have kind of outside the deficit down.
Now, along with that, they recommend that we put on a three percent per year increase.
Yeah.
I feel like you gotta do that, but they recommend.
And that was a forty-two thousand.
I haven't talked about that for a long time. If you put a three percent on that, and then the next year, put a three percent, then five years from now, you're most likely, your odds of having to jump up to fifty is less.
And I completely understand what you're saying, but when you start handing people hundred fifty-two hundred dollar water bills, they're not gonna hang around here.
Oh, no, Rob.
You think it'd be fine, pay a hundred, hundred fifty-two hundred dollar water bills?
Where you at?
It'd take like...
We've got a house...
Close to a hundred thousand gallons, not many people do that.
Well, see, that's why I'm trying to figure out what the average household usage is, thousand, thousand, you know, thousand, four thousand, four thousand five hundred, five thousand?
With kids, and they're late, I would say five, six thousand gallons, I would say maybe average, you know? And now, and of course, in summertime, in winter time, it would be less, for the single person, like I said.
Because it's more usage.
So, I argue. Yeah, but at least it wouldn't...
So, the water bill is gonna go up around thirty-five, fifty, thirty-five to fifty bucks?
Doing some, if you, if you...
Right now, as soon as we pass it, their water bill is gonna go up thirty-five to fifty bucks.
Doing some, some of the high bucks.
Won't let you up that much.
If it's six thousand gallons, it's six dollars and thirty...
Oh, you're talking about the whole, total?
Yeah.
Well, there's a lot of them paying fifty bucks now.
Right, right, I understand that.
So, we're already paying...
And now they're gonna pay fifty now, now they're gonna pay a hundred instead of fifty, almost double the water bill.
I ain't gonna double it. Well, I mean, when you look at that per thousand gallon price, you, you probably... So, talking about paying water bills, now I won't tell them anything, buy it, no charge. But there's one household here in town, that last couple of months, they, their water bill had ran around three hundred dollars. Because they had done a water... We told them, we even cut their water off, and they raised all kind of gang about that. So, okay, if you wanna pay the law of water, then...
Will they pay it for it?
They'll pay for it, they're just pouring water, I mean, like a hundred and, like the last one, a hundred and thirty-seven thousand gallons.
That household should get five hundred thousand gallons.
Are they capable of getting it fixed?
They capable of paying three hundred dollars for one bill, I would say, yeah.
That would fix, that...
Yeah, it could, I feel like they have...
Well, no, yeah, I understand what you're saying, all right, but if anybody's gonna pay three hundred dollars for one...
Yeah, I mean, if I'm, I'm not gonna pay that every month versus, I don't know, plumber, but maybe some kind of range, but, yeah.
If you use five thousand gallons, it'd be sixty dollars and sixty-eight cents a gallon.
Well, I still have to ask...
That's five thousand gallons, because the first thousand is three, and then now forty-two times four.
Now, take that four times six thirty-two, all fair. You see, that's what I'm trying to see, if you use that, you went from a twenty-eight dollar bill or a thirty dollar bill to a fifty or sixty-six dollar bill.
Carried up to, or...
Do it without the six thirty-two, which was three dollars and twelve cents for the next four thousand, or five dollars.
Twelve, twelve, forty-eight, that's a...
Okay, well, I'm back to my, I'm back to my original question.
No, 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 no.
Twenty-three, back to my original question, if we don't get to comply, and you go sixty cents, we gotta keep going up, you're right, we're trying to get to compliance, you're trying to say it right. If we just forget to comply, we're good.
That's basically the main thing, but...
Point five.
Right, because...
From the thirty-seven dollar water bill to a sixty-six dollar water bill, that's what I'm saying. You just be ready down here, because you know they gonna come running.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
That's why we roll them down here.
I just...
I mean, that's a lot, but have you been to the grocery store lately?
Yeah, that's why people can't afford sixty-six dollar water bill.
That's what it would be, and that's what it is.
But by, but by the same token, by same token, by same token, we're running a deficit, I think, if we afford just not to...
Now, we gotta do something.
That's why I'm saying, we're, we're, we're kind of beating the dead horse, because we have to...
Inflation affects everything.
Thank you, it does.
And that's what, what we're dealing with, is inflation.
Inflation, yeah.
We, we have lost ground for the past, what, two years, inflation really took off?
Exactly.
We have lost ground for the past two years, and looking forward, it looks like we're gonna lose more.
Yeah, exactly, we can't be losing ground expecting to report.
Right, we've lost ground for two years, and, I mean, I hate to say it, but we got, we got to catch hold and stop the bleeding somewhere.
We do, we do, we would.
Or we're gonna mess around and be in a real disaster.
Oh, yeah.
Well, our, our problem here, and I'm talking about the city, is we, we reduce, we cut, we, we try to minimize all of our expenditures, then the state comes along and throws something like this plumbing bit or something, and cleaning out the sewer ponds, I mean, that's ridiculous.
Oh, we, is there, is there any grants available for any of this, or we getting any kind of extra money?
No, there's not.
It'd be good to have that up, everybody that we service on a, on a tax turnback money, wouldn't it?
We, uh, do what?
It'd be good to have everybody that we service on a tax turnback money, be good to have annexed people we service.
You're not gonna generate, look at your...
More than we get.
More than we get, more than you got, but it ain't enough to solve the problem.
So, that one percent, that, I guess, my penny tax rate that you're finally getting, how, will that help the cities any, that the state?
One percent tax over, overall tax?
Penny, I think it was a penny tax.
Uh, Ralston raised their taxes, the city taxes here a couple of years ago, and it's had an increment in the... There's more money than anything we've talked about, is a sales tax.
We don't currently have a city tax, do we?
Not, not a sales tax.
Yeah.
We gotta buy mail tax, which is buy mail, you know, mail, not much, and that's on land we were ganging and stuff.
So, realistically, what are we looking at if you do a, a sales tax in the city? You're looking at the store, and the mail?
The mail, the food truck, the mail?
The truck and the mail.
Is the food truck?
Store and the mail.
Considered in, because it's mobile? Or is it?
Inside city is?
Yeah, she does business in the city.
Inside city target is sales tax.
Is the meat meal inside or outside?
Now, it's the wood meal.
We don't, we don't even have a motorcycle shop in, in city limits, no, kind of, to the whole motorcycle shop.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's the things that would raise money.
What about like Foster, is, is it?
Nah, it's, it's where he does the work, if he does work here.
Yeah, that's where all the people work, he work, and if he working out of town and doesn't run town, that's where he's supposed to go. Now, I don't know how to, but that's where...
And no matter who you're talking about, somebody's gonna buy a tax rate somewhere, it's not just gonna...
Yeah. So, okay, what's the decision on the water rate increase?
I move that we have a water rate increase, you know, because we need to get it to comply, so...
Okay, move, move the motion made to increase it to six dollars and thirty-two cents, does your second?
I'll second it.
All four. All right. Okay, now...
What?
I didn't know, I'm undecided on it, I, I was wanting more discussion on it, but we move forward, and that's, don't need discussion if I'm out voted anyway, just...
Well, I mean, you want something?
If I have any more questions, I'll come see Mr. Mayor one day next week. We don't need to run along with me.
Are you abstaining from voting, I...
Right.
Abstaining.
Honestly, I mean, I...
As I know we gotta do something, I just, I gotta have a good understanding, when people start asking me, I need to know what I tell them, I wanna look at them going, ooh.
I agree, yeah.
All right, next item on the list is the sewer rate. Uh, from there up is five fifty, and I'm asking for no change.
So, that's exactly what we're doing now?
Motion to accept that.
I move that we accept the motion of no change.
I'll second.
We could've put some of that money off of that, and, I mean, we've just been on same bill anyway.
You know, you know, and that's what, right now, we're gonna have to turn our bookkeeping system up down, upside down, in order to comply with what they're wanting, because when we borrowed the money to build this water and sewer system, the feds combined them all together, it's just one, they don't water sewer, it's just water sewer. But now then, they say we gotta keep it separated, so they can figure the cost, actual cost of each one of them. And, I mean, and there's where the cost is gonna come in, if we have to clean out them ponds?
Yeah.
That's gonna be expensive and a long project, because you're gonna have to drain the ponds, you're gonna have to get in there and scoop out the slush.
Put my dirt crane, the dredge crane.
The next thing you're gonna have to worry about is what you're gonna do with that sludge.
You gotta be, yeah. Solid waste.
Solid waste, uh, so, all four. All right, now then, uh, I'm asking again to set aside this six thousand dollars for this small sewer pump out of the arco ponds.
I'll make a motion, you do it.
I second.
All four. All right. Okay, now then, school, this come up last time, and it wasn't an item on the agenda, it's just something we needed to put on the agenda. So, I reckon, I think I know what everybody wants to do. But has anybody got any good wording as to how to write something up to counter that?
Do we have an attorney?
Yeah, I mean...
That's who we need to, we need to, let him draw it up to keep us, I mean...
Talk to him.
I think so, I may, I may be wrong.
I actually agree, I agree with you, because...
That way, uh...
One little word to throw the whole thing in the...
And a mess.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll make a motion, you speak to an attorney of them, about drawing that up.
I second.
Uh, motion, but Rob.
I second.
And, all right, all four.
It's not a vote, because I have no idea what you're talking about.
Uh, we, we, we agreed here some months ago to let Hannah be the newest administrator of rebuilding the school. But it looks like that whole fight here has fell on her face, but we're still out here, cutting her if she can do it. So, what, what I think we're all in agreement with is to draft up something to put in the minutes that we rescind that from, knowing she hasn't got the authority anymore to do. And I had talked to her about it, and she, well, I said, I talked to her about it, you know, we don't talk anymore with text. But she sent me a fairly lengthy text that she was having a lot of problems right now with her this and that, and her company, family, and blah, 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 and that. So, she said that she's gonna put it off until maybe sometime in the winter, maybe bring it back up. So, we just cancel the whole deal now, and if she brings it back up, then we will have a little bit more knowledge of what to look for. So, which way you go? So, everybody voted for that, didn't they? Yeah, okay. Okay, now then, we've got a, this probably been going on for some time, but we're running out of space to store old records. And I don't like to throw away old records, I know they say there's so many years, and that's it. But now, if something comes up from a long time back, I would hate to not have something to work with. I mean, I don't foresee that happening, never had it happen, but we're in a different world, I don't know.
You, you know, we're in a digital world now, don't you?
Yeah.
Can you digitalize the oldest ones?
Yeah. Do what?
Can you digitalize the oldest ones?
We're talking about a lot of bad young money, aren't we, labor workers, why?
Is it?
You could, you had to basically make it, scan it into a system?
Scan it into a system?
Yeah.
Yeah. Scan it into a web base? Good, can we get somebody to check in to that, because I mean, there's not nobody checking to see what the...
Well, why don't we just find someplace to put your stuff?
That's what I was, what do you have in mind, you have, it's on...
Here in the back is the only place, I know what we've got right now, this...
Man, that's not heater or cooler though, is it?
Yeah.
Oh, it is, it is air conditioning?
Yeah, it's not like this in here, but it's got some boot door.
What's that, what's back there?
Just various items that were stored.
Yeah.
How far back are the records, Rob? Obviously, in the...
Oh, Lord, I don't know, long as I've been here. What year was the city unit made it?
That's for my time.
Eighteen, eighteen eighty, old one. He ain't got nothing like that.
I don't have some reason to...
Building up there, we don't have any place, up at the school?
Mm-hmm.
We would have to do some roofing on some of it, but there's a safe up there. You know, an office there that, I don't know how big it is.
Large enough to do what you want to do?
It was, it was still a part of, but now it wasn't over.
How big is space that we're talking about?
Where's it all at now?
In here, in this old log and bathroom. That was, uh...
I mean, that big is basically the top of it now, so...
Ten to ten would be, maybe a little more than that. And we get in there, got started, you start going down, there may be some old, old stuff that can't be thrown away. But, but I'm, I'm just not much for throwing away a lot of records. But I think we could probably deal with enough room back here to do what we need to do.
What do you do?
Uh...
You said there's enough room to build?
You just a room, just, just corner of all that in there.
Should've gone along, separate it from...
Separate all.
Open area?
Yeah.
What kind of constant thing you're talking about? Just a simple...
I guess a lot of more, I mean, building, basically four two walls, and we got more.
You already have the stuff? You already have that?
Material?
Yeah.
Now, you're talking about maybe a couple hundred bucks.
Some kind of a builder, or something like that.
We'll talk about that one there?
Okay.
I don't see a problem.
So, you need us to make a motion, or what, I mean, you have, you have the authority to do that anytime you're ready?
Well, that's true, but, but go ahead, and let someone make a motion anyway.
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we allow the space to our quarries of records that we need it.
Second.
I'll second.
Rob. All four. Okay. All right, my next page, we've got some lines on it, so who's first, D?
During the headline?
Um, I don't really have anything other than, we still want that driveway that goes straight in to the farmer's market or to the pavilion.
And we'll, we'll think about that. Anyway, they'll tell you the new manager of the farmer's market, and their, their activities is cut off for the year because of seasons. Uh, do you have enough?
Well, I have a question, how much would they come, that's, how much would something like that come?
That's a little street, that's, that area, that she said, there.
How far in, like, all the way to the park?
No, I think just...
Basically putting on culvert?
Across that ditch?
Removing those two trees?
And maybe like a little, I mean, it's not far.
Are you asking gravel, asphalt?
I would think just gravel and culvert.
You're just wanting to make it to where they can enter there, it's more of a straight shot rather than, if, if you don't know where this intro... You're just wanting to make it to where they can enter there, it's more of a straight shot rather than, i- if you don't know where this entrance is down here, it is difficult to find it. We've had numerous people that pass it up, even when we have flags and signs. We've had a lot of people from other towns come and they'll turn right there and then realize that that's not a through street.
Yeah.
I'm not just doing, I'm just saying about, how much are we comping about?
I would say the cost of a culvert and then the gravel to finish from where the asphalt is on into the park. Probably not, I'm not good with distance, I would say me to that wall, gravel.
Uh, for me, I, I would like to get some, uh, financial data on like what we're voting on, I, I wouldn't want to just say, oh hey, let's do it and then like, wow, it's gonna cost thirty thousand, fifteen, you know.
So that would be, I mean, you would have to make a motion and ask for the city to do the research and be able to provide you with those projections.
That would.
Okay.
But anyway, though, that's something we need to think about before we do it, go away by the way.
Right.
Though this one we've got, this is my view, this one we've got has served us now for about thirty years. And there were any problems with it.
But now you have, but now you have something that is drawing people to that pavilion that we want people to use and they can't get to it.
Yeah.
It's very confusing to tar, you think you're going into.
You look like Portland somebody driveway.
Yeah.
Portland driveway up here. You don't because you've been doing it for thirty years.
Well, sometimes.
But somebody new coming out through here trying to get into the thing, they look down that road. I, I watched it myself, they pull down that road and they get to a stop, and they're like.
How do I get there?
And they turn around and go back out.
Yeah.
I've seen it.
And, and I'm not even for or against it, I'm just saying, well, you know, it's easy to say we need to give a roll, but I'd like to know what kind of money we're talking about, because maybe out of the, maybe out of the council budgeted.
So realistically, Maurice, you could probably talk to the county judge and get a culvert.
Not in the city, not in the city. The county judge cannot provide a culvert inside the city limits. That has to come from the city. The city gets money, that's what your turn back money is designed to do, is to pay for your city streets.
Oh.
Yeah. One of the things also, we're hoping to use that grassy area that's behind that church. Like for our July, that's what we use, we directed a lot of people over there to park there. That way, we would save the front part here for our elderly people and our disabled. And then, of course, where you stood and volunteered for us and helped the traffic control, that allowed people to park over at the school. So by opening that up, that would allow our elderly people to drive straight in, into the parking spaces. And it would allow the other side, the grass side, to be used for non-handicap parking. It would be a better control.
Again, again, it's kind of, we're taking the cart from the horse. And I understand what you're saying, but let's see the projection of what's this gonna cost, if it's cost effective, before we start making.
Correctly, that, that information has to.
You gotta make a motion.
Cause he's the only one that can provide that for you. The city has to provide the culvert and the gravel. They get turn back money. That's what, your, your, your turn back money goes into your street fund. You can use that.
The main thing you need to look at is what is the most needed, most demanded.
Right.
That we need to use our money for.
Right, and that's why I was saying, is it cost effective? That's what I'm saying, if we could get an estimate just on what it's gonna cost, that might automatically say, well, it's not something we can do right now or something we can't do right now, so. Cause I'm not, we're not trying to get away, I'm just trying to say the, you know, the cost of it. So, I mean, is that gonna, is that, is that a fair amount, just see what the cost is, because it might be, yeah, so.
Is the farmer's market paying the tax? So if we added like a cent tax, sales tax that don't apply to them?
So, it only applies to certain things. Um, there are certain items that are taxable, like we have Ms. Debbie Hickers, she sells radicchio curry. That is a taxable item and she is responsible for paying her own taxes. I believe the soup lady, um, keep it simple, because it's, it's a, a food product, but it's, it's different, it's prepackaged. I believe there's a tax on that. Uh, there's a jewelry lady, we have a jewelry lady, Ms., my mind is blank. Um, Taylor, Ms. Taylor has jewelry, that's a taxable item. So yes, some of our vendors do pay a tax, but they have to do that themselves. Others don't. Um, we're not responsible for keeping up with that tax. They are responsible for having their own tax ID and providing their own tax forms to the state.
Yeah.
Um, like when we have events down here, like in July, we discovered that we are supposed to register those events with the state of Arkansas. They send me a form. So the, the vendors that came to that, they had to have a tax ID number. So the, the dollars that were generated here in July, the city of, of Emmett received nothing off that. Eight percent, uh, I'm sorry, it's eight point two five. Six percent went to the state of Arkansas, two point six five goes to Nevada County. So even, and that's what I originally had thought, we did charge a sales tax and that by having those events, it helped generate some, some dollars into the city. Without the city's sales tax, it, we don't get any money off of it. All the money that went through the store during the railroad, um, derailment, none of that came back to the city of Emmett. None of that money came back in this, in the form of a sales tax. Nevada and the state of Arkansas come from that.
To create a city sales tax, what would we need to do, Mr. Booker, how, how would we handle that? You know, I don't know all the details, but it'd have to get it on the ballot, which is two weeks this year. And, but the main thing we'd have to do would be publicize it and promote it.
You'd have to promote it for sure because everybody can buy it.
Tell people what it's for. Ralston didn't have a problem promoting it. Uh, now what, what we would have, if I didn't.
If you could tie it to a specific need, like for instance, right now, Hope is doing one because they're in need of new fire equipment and a firehouse. Uh, their, their turnout gear is out of date, um, and they're also needing a firehouse. So they're proposing, uh, I believe it's a one cent sales tax to go into play until that need is met. And then once that need is met, you can rescind that tax, you can take it away. Um, so that's an option that you can look at. If you have a need and you educate the public of what your need is and why you're needing that to generate that income, they would be more likely to help you, you know, get to it.
So what would be, since you said it's too late, what would be the early years, I suppose probably next year sometime, you could think about the city sales tax.
Well.
Cause you can get it to be going.
If, if I'm understanding correctly, you need to have it in with the other elections, it would be two years.
It'd be two years.
Or you have a special election where you have to pay all the costs.
Okay.
Saying, I don't know what that's all for the time.
So right now, probably two more years before we leave the place, Brian.
You have a present, Brian. Any good? Alright. So we wanna try to put some kind of cost together about opening up the drive, opening up the street.
Yeah, just, just, just some, we're looking for those, like, it may not be cost effective, you know, maybe more significant. At least, there's just a ballpark trigger to it.
Alright, you got anything, Deanna?
Yes, sir. Um, so the Eva group, our next large, uh, event that we have, Highway sixty seven, um, it's a huge committee. They do a yard sale every year and have for numerous years. That is scheduled for, uh, the weekend of October sixth and seventh. So we will be setting up our usual yard sale, uh, there beside Highway sixty seven Gas and Grill. The next thing we did is we went ahead and talked about a city cleanup day. Um, we talked about, uh, cleaning up down there at the Arkla Park. Uh, we put that out, then we'll start doing that on October the nineteenth. Um, I realize that may not be a time that you guys can do that roof, but we just felt like we needed to go ahead and use this, this cool weather, especially when you're asking elderly people to come out and join you. Um, there's several areas down there that need to be cleaned up. There is two large, um, uh, tree stumps. One of them has really got grass growing up around it where we feel like we can, can kill that grass and try to burn that tree stump down to a more level with the ground. There's two of those. Um, along that back fence, there's a lot of, um, what I think growers call sucker plants that are just small miscellaneous things that are growing up in that, uh, chain link fence that we could clean that up, cut those off at the roots to make that fence look nicer. Um, we hope to be able to go ahead and pull up those rebar, uh, rods that are drove into the ground around that playset. Uh, most, all of those, um, timbers, um, that were originally put there some twenty odd years ago when that, that, uh, park was created with that grant, those have deteriorated and rotted away, they're just splinters now. But that rebar is still sticking up out of the ground, which creates a potential hazard for each child running to be impaled with that if they were falling on it. So that's another hope that we'll be able to, um, you know, last year or the year that we cleaned up down there, we had several men with tractors that came. My husband's got a tractor, we're gonna bring that and try to put chains around it and pull those up out of the ground. Um, one thing that we would like to also possibly have your help on, there are a whole bunch of, um, railroad ties, cross ties that are down there, um, and they're just kind of in a disarray, which creates a health hazard for snakes and rodents and spiders. And that's probably less than, I'm not good with distance, would you say, ten, twenty feet from the play area where that is?
A little bit further than that.
Okay, so.
Who little cross ties, Walton?
I believe it's the city. So what we were, what we were hoping is with your help to, uh, maybe move those to a different location. Maybe move those down here to the barn, the work barn, because we just don't feel like that that's something that needs to be around a children's play area. Um, in all the research I've done, it's, it's highly, um, frowned upon to have any type of chisote around a children's play area because of, you know, it, it's just not, it, it's, it's a, a chemical that children don't need to play around. Um, so we, we hope maybe we could get the city's help in maybe removing those.
How many are down there?
I haven't counted them, I'm gonna say to them.
About twelve, fifteen of them.
What were they for?
We brought them in there to rebuild the playground. What we were gonna do then is put them down underneath everything and then put some kind of suitable top on that their kids wouldn't be touching.
They're do, they're doing a long cross tie, they're about what, twenty feet long?
Yeah, they're long.
And just, just for information, you mentioned the roof, Deanna, uh, we talked about the dimensions of it in the past. It's twelve foot, six inches on each side, thirty six inches, thirty six feet long. Actually thirty six and three inches. You can stretch that ten, three inches over thirty six foot, can't you, Randy? But that's, that's the dimension on it.
Alright. How much you gonna do yet?
We cut her off now.
You're fine. So, um, do you think that would possibly be a thing that we could get those removed by that cleanup day? Or during that cleanup day, could we possibly move those?
Probably could move them, that wouldn't be no problem. But, uh, what I was talking about is putting those down underneath the ground for a base. Then you would have to have less of some kind of decorative or more safe top to put on that. Save a cut of money, by the way, but have a, they would, but wind up being completely covered, so.
Uh, could we maybe, I guess the biggest thing is, is the way that they are scattered across there. I have a boy, when boys kind of go there and play, they're looking for things to, to climb on and jump off of. It's, it's just inviting an opportunity for.
We get the rest of them, of them, direct them, we, we move that.
Yeah, and then, cause it's, it's grown up with shrubs and stuff, you know, uh, sticker bushes, we need to kill and that kind of thing. So our hope is to do that on October the nineteenth with the community's help. Um, after that, we do have our, October nineteenth, I'm sorry. For, and I just put eight in the morning to possibly twelve noon. Last time we were able to start at eight and we finished up about eleven when we were over here. Cause there was quite a few volunteers that came out and helped us. Um, then we are planning a community trunk or treat on October thirty first from six PM to eight PM down here at the pavilion. Ms. Roseland, can you mark that for us on your calendar on the thirty first? Um, we just felt like that that was a needed event because.
Chuck wagon or up here?
Up here at the pavilion, our, the trunk or treat where we made the big U.
Yeah.
And let people, we, we just felt like that was a more safe opportunity, uh, for our residents who are elderly. Um, you know, people want to give out candy, but you know, in this day and age, it's kind of scary to open your door to, to teenagers or adults who are dressed up and, and a lot of them do. If you're an older lady by yourself, you might not wanna do that. But if you're in a group event and you've got, you know, ten or twelve other people there with you, you're not as frightened to be able to give out your candy. So it provides a safe harbor for our residents to give out candy and it provides a safe harbor for our families with small children to come to get candy. So that's why we felt that was a good thing for the community. Um, we have already begun our preparations on getting ready for, uh, Christmas. Um, one of the things that we are respectfully asking the council to help us with, um, we have always put our Christmas tree in the back corner of the, of the, uh, chuck wagon. We've always been able, there's a, there's a, um, closet back there that when you open the door, there's a light bulb that has a plug in. That's how we plug in our Christmas tree. Last year, right at the last moment, we realized that that closet has been nailed shut and we were not able to gain access to that. So we literally had to, um, do some fancy engineering to run, um, extension cords up along the wall to get to the nearest plug.
Why would they ever, why would they ever call it nailed shut?
What closet you come with, Deanna?
The closet, as you're going into the men's and women's bathroom, the closet on the right hand side.
And the chuck wagon.
Mm-hmm. When I asked, I called Juan about it because when the ladies, they were, were setting up the tree and they called and said, we can't get this closet door to open. So I said, well, no problem, I'll send my husband up there. So Jackie went up there to get into it and he called me and he said, it's nailed shut. And I'm like, oh, okay. So I called Juan to see why and he said, there's some kind of a piano in there that, that y'all didn't want, nobody messing with, so it was nailed shut. So I said, okay.
What do y'all, I mean, there's not room in there for anything but the piano, so what?
We're needing to get to the light bulb, there's a, there's.
Electricity?
Mm-hmm, we need electricity.
Well, that's no problem.
Okay. Yeah, we just, we either need, what I was asking is could, if we couldn't get to that light bulb to plug our tree in, cause we run an extension cord under that door, could maybe a, a outlet be put on that wall? You know, I don't know.
And the outlet be in the chuck wagon dining area?
Yes. I mean, if we can get to that light with that outlet, we're good. But if we're not gonna have access to it, then we're gonna have to have some type of outlet inside the chuck wagon, in that corner.
And there's not one already back there?
No. No, we're on that, and I, I said the same thing when they called and said, there's no outlet, I said, I'm coming to find it. And I walked that whole, well, there's no outlet at all. On the long wall, the wall where the bathrooms are, ne- neither one of those have outlets.
Okay, we, we get a outlet.
Okay.
Who's piano was the one of them? There's not stories, just wanted, uh, where it come from, my, I know the church. I think it was one at the church.
Might be a good place to store our, 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 yeah, in that room.
No, I wasn't a parent all the time, a place like that.
There was one church years ago, David Christian put up there.
What?
It was one of the church years ago that David Christian put up there, I don't know if that's the.
That's probably where it's coming from.
Was it in the, is it in Christians or is it the church?
It's whoever wants it right now.
Church years, years ago that David Christian, back in the middle of the fall.
I, I'm sure it wasn't, it's, I don't think it's even worth, you can run down.
You're wondering about the room, mate, we're worried about.
Yeah, the room ain't that big.
It ain't.
It's air conditioning room, what is it?
It ain't even timid yet.
No, uh.
There might be a little beep now.
It is a little, yeah, well, it's a full size piano, but it's not okay with that room.
Okay, then, the last thing.
Like this damn, we're in a problem.
Okay, perfect. Uh, the last thing that we are proposing, um, the chuck wagon, if you've not been there lately, is in need of quite a bit of repairs. Uh, one of the biggest things that needs to be done is those floors are absolutely gorgeous hardwood floors. Um, and they, over the years of use, i- it's, it's time that we either redo them to preserve them or you're gonna get to the point that you, that we're ruining them. So, um, the Eva committee, uh, voted to make the proposal to the city council that we would do some type of a match program with you guys. Uh, meaning if you would be willing to put in a thousand dollars, we would do fundraisers to match you that thousand. So that we could put that money back into the chuck wagon to make repairs. So that we could put that money back into the chuck wagon to make repairs. Um, in the, both bathrooms, the outline of the window seals are chipped and peeling. Those need to be scraped and repainted. In those bathrooms, both men and women, there needs to be, um, rails. Handrails for your elderly people who need assistance in pulling themselves back to a standing position, that needs to be in both sets of bathrooms. Of course, the, the flooring. The countertops, um, on, on the, that we use to, to serve off the, I, I guess what it looks like to me is those, uh, floor tiles that maybe had the, the adhesive on the back that you peeled off. Those were originally stuck down. A lot of those are peeling up, have even broken off. They just don't look nice, look pretty. So we did put down a, um, like a shelf lining of a wood grain look, which made it look better. But it does, you know, it, it needs to be fixed and fixed right, I guess is what I'm trying to say. So the other major repair that needs to be done is at the back door, where you come up on the, the landing. You come in, there is a space probably about a foot, foot and a half wide. If you don't step over that, it's gonna sink down probably about that far. Now, I'm a big girl, so that's probably why it sinks down that far. I mean, little girl might not sink down that far. But that has, whatever is the brace that's supposed to be under there has rotted away, gone away, that needs to be fixed. Um, at the last time we used there, the building, the back door, we literally had to take pliers to get it locked and unlocked and kind of have to hold it up a little because it had kind of shifted. Um, then the other thing that needs to be done is on that outside landing, we have rails on the ramp coming up. But when you get to the outside landing where it's flat, no rails were placed around that. Um, and so that creates a fall hazard. Um, you know, somebody step off that, you know, that, that, that could leave us liable. So there are several things that need to be addressed up there and we would be willing to try to do some type of a match program with you if that's something that you would consider.
Have these items been brought to the mayor's attention before tonight?
Um, I know I personally probably have not, no, um, I don't know if anybody else has.
That rail hasn't been.
I know the rail has, one rail has.
Well, I, I know, I brought the rail and, and I have brought, I have brought the flooring and that door. I brought that to the city council, um, letting them know that that was to be done.
To me, there shouldn't be a match program. If the city can't afford to keep the building up, maybe we need to sell the building. But I think we can afford to keep the building up.
Sell a building is a good, good fact, too.
Whichever way, if we can't afford, we shouldn't be taking matches and grants and stuff just to keep the building up. Whatever, I mean.
I am glad you brought that up because that was one of the things that the Eva members stated, that if the city would be interested in selling the building, we might be interested in purchasing, purchasing it if we could raise the money, the Eva group.
A bad thing, you can't, I don't think, you can just say, we're gonna sell it to Eva. We gotta put it up for auction and go through nine yards of gravel.
Put it up for auction, first you gotta have an appraise.
Right.
And then you gotta get a certain percent, I don't know what that's gonna be, all the appraised value.
But I'm just saying that if you chose to do that, if we could figure out a way that we could pay for it, we might be interested in doing that, yes.
I just, if the city can't afford to keep it up, then the city doesn't need it anyways.
Uh, we, oh, we got two minute build it already. I agree one hundred percent.
But that building does generate a little bit of revenue. I mean, and it, it affords the community, uh, with a place to meet. Um, because we have no other place hardly. I mean, we, we do have the, the, uh, storm shelter. Um, but most of the people, when they talk about, you know, having their Thanksgiving dinner, I know a lot of families, Ms. Roseland should be able to tell you better than I. But a lot of families do their Thanksgiving dinner there rather than coming to their house because their families have gotten so large. I know Eva, we use that facility to do our community, uh, Christmas, uh, I'm sorry, community Thanksgiving dinner that we partner with all the churches. We use that, we also use it for our Christmas festivities with Santa after the parade. So those are the couple of times a year that, that I know we use it.
So what's the little town just outside of Evans? McCaskill has a brand new community center.
Yes, sir.
Maybe three, five years old?
They got it through a grant. But right.
Really, or have we, before you sink a bunch of money into a building that's sixty or seventy years old, maybe we should look at a grant for a community center.
You know, you know, we talked about that the last conference, on our, on our grant business. And our grants are shot to the foot for the next ten years. Because our low modern income household is gone from a little over fifty percent down to thirty percent. And that's because, in my opinion, of a poor census count. Now then, what that means to us that we're grants concerned. If you're over fifty percent, tell my, you got a really good chance of getting grants. But if you're under that, you got, you still support of getting grants. The grants that you get there is twenty five, fifty percent match mostly.
Right, right.
So, and we're, we're on the back burner supporting grants for the next several years.
Unless we do another census count, we pay for it. But we talked about that disgusting, I don't know what it's gonna do.
I don't, I don't know.
I have a question. If we voted to annex people in, do they, how, how does that do with census? Do they, um, when is, when is it effect?
You know, Shannon, I can't answer that honestly. It was when that would take effect, it would probably be the next census count.
I did read where you could possibly petition the state of Arkansas to allow you to create a, go in and do a new census count. And by annexing and doing the census count at the same time, you would be killing two birds with one stone. And that it would take effect once that went in. You would have to petition for that opportunity.
But we have to pay for a new census count, so is it that?
We talked about that when, when you weren't here. And it was then a possibility for us to go vouch the house at count census. But just general consensus of the council at that time was, who's gonna tell us what their income is?
And the thing is, if Juan come up to your help and said, okay, how many people live here, how much you make?
But is there an option to like tech laptops or something and they could fill out their own stuff? Do you could present the laptops in here?
The last census count and that didn't happen. That's why we got such a star.
Well, we didn't go door to door with the laptop, we just suspected people.
No, no, we didn't go, but now everyone had that option to do it themselves.
Well, not everybody has laptops.
Well.
Or knows how to work a phone.
Well, that's true, too, a lot of really.
The, the, the research I did said if you created a committee that would take each ward and that you did it within a certain amount of time, again, you've got to educate your public of why you're doing it. What, what our research said, you know, before you ever started, educate your public of why you're doing it. Of course, our why is, we need to get our census number raised, we need to get our, uh, poverty level raised. So we need to tell people why we're doing this. Because by raising those two numbers, it affords us the opportunity to be able to apply for grants, which is free money that could come back to the city to help in the means of the fire department. They've got out of date turnout gear that they're currently wearing. We can explain to the citizens, you'll be helping your volunteer firemen. We have things that's needed within the city that we could use that money for, that, that will be helping us. We can explain, that's how we got the pavilion. We got the pavilion from a grant, a hundred thousand dollar grant. A lot of people don't know that. Even during the farmer's market, they were like, man, this is nice, how did y'all get it? We applied for a grant. So again, the whole, the whole core to everything is educating your community. You may have to do it through town hall meetings, you may have to do it through, uh, newspaper advertisements. You know, but educating the community of what your needs are will help them get on board with us.
Okay, well, we've gotten into more of the report, so, uh, anyone got anything else to bring us? Are they going to go anything, we'll put on the next month's agenda. Alright.
I'm making a motion to adjourn.